Seven o'clock. So I'd like to call the meeting to order. Just remind everyone that the work session is being recorded and will be posted on our website. Remind everyone to please mute your microphones unless you're actually speaking. When you do speak, you know, state your first name so people know who is speaking. Please be courteous to each other. Speak clearly and slowly that everyone can hear you. So I will try to introduce every item on the agenda. And what I'd like to do now is call the roll call so that we get the official. Janet?
Here.
Chari?
Here.
Ginny?
Here.
Dick?
Here.
Lynn?
Here.
Nancy?
Here.
Jess?
Here.
Alan?
Here.
Renee?
Here.
Milton?
Here.
Andy, here. Well, thank you all. Approval of the agenda, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved, Ginny.
Is there a second?
Second.
Lynn?
I'd like to add a discussion. Add a topic.
All right.
Yeah.
Well, Nancy?
Oh, I would like to talk about the meeting last night.
Do we do that under chairman's remarks?
Fine, wherever you want to put it. Well, yeah, as long as you're not remarking and you let the board remark.
Yeah, yeah. Is that okay?
That's fine.
I'll even make a note here.
Okay.
All right. Is there any objection to the agenda?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody else?
Unless, or maybe I'm just wrong, do we have the ability? Have we given the link out for residents to be able to attend?
Not that I'm aware of, no. And I have no one signed up for a resident's speak out.
Can't be in favor of any agenda that doesn't allow that, we're not following the open meetings, eh?
All right. I'll take the roll call vote. Janet?
Yes.
Chari?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Dick?
Uh, I think Alan raises a good point there, are we going to discuss that?
I, I suggest you follow the form that we just approved last meeting if you want to. Put a topic on the agenda?
Well, this is not where, we're having a vote on approving the agenda.
We're, right.
Without any discretion.
Right, we're not, we're having a vote on the agenda. Yes or no?
I'm going to say no until we get this resolved, why, why are we not streaming? Why are we holding a closed meeting?
All right. Lynn?
Yes.
Nancy?
No.
Jess?
Yeah.
Renee?
No.
Andy, yes. All right, agenda's approved.
Well, let's put that on.
They never asked me to vote.
Yeah, how about Alan?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I have you down as a no, Alan?
No.
Okay, I, yeah, I had you recorded as a no, sorry.
Andy, are we going to discuss this now?
No.
What was the final vote, Andy?
Six to four.
What was the tally?
Six to four.
That's one vote away from not, not approval, I think at some point we need to discuss this.
I, I'd like to suggest that we include this in our discussion at the end under chairman's remarks.
Well, talking points, I mean, not talking points, but propose new topics. Let's do it there.
Well, I, I mean, wait a minute, this is an illegal meeting. Why, why are we proceeding?
Right, exactly.
I, I mean, we can't, this is supposed to be an open meeting. We haven't voted to have a closed meeting.
Right.
Right.
What's going on here?
It's put out, it's been published, the background is there, it is being recorded.
And so far we've been stonewalled, every, keep making suggestions for changes and no movement, no discussion, no justification, just, we're just going to keep doing what we're doing. And there was no board, there was no board decision to hold it this way. We never made an affirmative decision to hold these meetings this way.
Right, the board decision was not to stream the work session, okay?
When, when was that vote?
Uh, two years ago.
Whoa, 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 whoa.
I'm not, I'm not talking about streaming, I'm talking about making it possible for the public to attend, which would be very easy to do. And we, we don't do it, we don't do it, we don't do it. And.
And that was a different situation. This is when we have to meet virtually. And so we have to do this, this way. But there are ways that we can open the meeting, and we've discussed this before, but we get stonewalled every time. So now I think you're having a little rebellion from your board. Because they want things to be acknowledged as being different. And now we need to take the opportunities that are handed to us, like opening this up for the rest of the community.
Andy, if we may, at some point I'd like to get Chuck involved because we are talking about, we have shared with the board a number of times why that's a bad idea. We, we, we can, we can have residents speak out, we can have anyone, for example, this may be hypothetically, but each one of the board members can be given ten, ten names and you can invite them. We just don't want to put our, post our, this meeting out on our website so anyone can show up with us having no control over it. Our IT department has, division has told us a number of times, that's not a good idea to just post it where anyone from anywhere in the world can join in on this meeting and all of a sudden we cannot control that. One of the things we can do, we can have Chuck attend a session and explain to the board why our security procedure is not, is not a good practice to do that.
I want to know why we can stream the monthly meeting, but we can't stream the work session.
Dick, that's not, that's a, that was a board decision.
No, 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 two years ago, we didn't have a COVID virus. Two years ago, we had open work sessions. And that was, that was adequate. Now, we're, we, we don't have, we've closed this meeting. We have closed the public out of a public meeting. This is illegal. And I, I'm, I'm thinking maybe, how much, how many people do we need for a quorum?
You got six, you need six for a quorum.
Well, if, if one other person besides the four who voted against this wants to join us, we can shut this meeting off.
My suggestion would be that we do complete the form and put this on the agenda for a future meeting and have Chuck come. And maybe there's a compromise where CA's IT security can be maintained, but we can make sure that people are able to attend the meeting who want to.
Well, keep in mind.
I feel like there's got to be a middle ground.
Keep in mind, everyone, what Dick is talking about is different than what Alan is talking about. There is, we can, just as we stream the board meetings, we can stream the work sessions.
No, let's do that.
What, Dick, that's not, that's a board decision.
Well, I, I, I.
What I'm talking.
We have open work sessions. This is not an open work session.
Dick, that's not the issue.
That's not.
That, that one we can solve overnight, right now, that is not the issue that Alan's raising.
No, it is.
Well, but they're related, they're certainly related.
But I mean, that, that's a simple one to deal with.
That might be something that we can deal with as the last item on tonight's agenda. Andy, if you'll accept it underneath there so that the board can make a motion and the next series of meetings will be different. If Milton is saying that the board needs to make a motion and, and create a policy, a restatement of our policy, then the staff can find some way of doing it. I have made suggestions, Alan's made suggestions, lots of people have made suggestions about how this might be done. Let's collate those at the end of our session, send them off to Chuck and we'll get a decision on it. So we'll know what we're looking at. But at the very least, we can make sure that we have these sessions open.
Right, so let's at least talk about the streaming, make sure we do the streaming at the end.
Well, in the meantime, we're having an illegal meeting.
Well. So Dick, do you feel like by not having the meeting, we're benefiting anybody?
Uh, I, I'm just concerned about our obligation to have a public meeting. And we have just, are we going to call this a closed meeting? I think it's, it's become, you want to vote to have a closed meeting, we can proceed.
No, it's.
I think, I think it qualifies as an open meeting under the, under the law.
How?
So, because the, the date and time were published, information was given as to how to participate. And it's no different than any other, you know, public meeting when the, when the village, people have village board meetings, they don't.
That's not true, Dick, because.
The information is there.
People can't watch us. Yes, we have put out information where if people can figure it out, they can, they can do a resident's speak out. But they can't watch us at work. The sunshine is not.
They can hear it, they can hear it.
Later, but they can't watch us work.
No, you can hear it live.
Okay, let's.
You can hear it live, I've listened to it live.
Can they hear this live?
So.
No, we cannot hear it live because it's a work session and we voted two years ago. We have not amended the policy, which I support, but I don't see where it's going to benefit anyone tonight to not hold this meeting as a result of it. So I.
Can people hear this meeting, if, by phone?
Not simultaneously, no.
No.
Okay, are, are we going to tape this or something and release it?
Yes.
We have been taping it.
It's being recorded right now.
It is.
And it'll show up on the website tomorrow?
Andy said that at the beginning.
Not tomorrow, whatever gets processed, but it'll show up on the website.
Yeah, last time it took several days.
Are you sure?
Dick, I, I'm okay moving forward as long as we will definitely today discuss this. All I've been wanting is movement on this rather than stonewalling.
Okay, I, I'll, I'll go along with it, I'm not happy about it.
I think it's just those two things.
All right. First thing. Work session topics, budget schedule, Milton, anything you want to say?
No, let's just proceed, please.
Susan?
Sorry, I was muted, I'm sorry. So we, ordinarily, the budget process starts in July. And, but this year is a year like no others, as you can imagine. And also, this would be the second year of a two-year budget. We, the board, the board in, in February approved FY21 budget and a conditional FY22 budget. As you all know, the FY21 budget changed dramatically, so the 22 budget that was conditionally approved needs to be revisited, it was, it's, it's, actually, we need to just start over. So what, I worked with my team and what, what we would propose is that we, we start a little later than usual. That we would actually, instead of having, asking you to discuss and review and approve parameters, the limits of the capital budget and the operating budget and the annual charge rate and cap in July, we think it, it would make better sense to wait, and I think some of you have expressed this a few meetings ago, until September. By then we would know, we have a very good experience with the annual charge collections and also have a few months of facility operations under our belts to see, you know, how, how well we're, how well that's going. So we propose that those discussions would be held in September and that you would vote on them also in September at your meeting. And then we're compressing the schedule that does make it harder on, on our staff to get it done in that amount of time. But, but I would propose then, instead of delivering the proposed budget or the draft budget to the community in December before the holiday season, we would deliver it in early January, on January 8th. So that would buy us a little more time. And we would still have the same end date, the same voting date of the end of February, your meeting in February. And then that gives us time to get the budget, you know, out to the community and also load it into our system for the May 1 financial statements. And also to just plan for capital projects that might need to be done before the summer season. So that's the background and the overview on why the schedule looks different from what you're used to. Anything on that? Or I guess.
Ginny?
I don't know, if Susan's finished, no?
Yeah.
Okay. I probably am going to be a minority on this, Susan, but I have a real problem with waiting until September for us to set the annual charge rate and the cap. The reason being, I see them as separate. I understand everything you're saying and in one way it may make some sense. In another way, I'm looking at it in terms of whether people can really afford to have any increase in the, in those two items at all. And I'm coming down the side, no, I don't think we should be raising those items. I think we've got to learn, as I've said for three years, to live within the budget. So I don't see any sense in waiting until September 10th, you should have those parameters now so that you can prepare the budget as opposed to waiting until September 10th and giving yourself and your staff very little time to figure out how much money you have. The increase would be minimal if it was one cent, not, maybe not even $500,000 anymore that, what would have been last year. It may be even less than that. And there are people that are not going to be able to afford to pay the annual charge or will take a long time to pay it. So to, to raise it these days when everybody's complaining about what are they really getting from CA anyway? And they just got their bills and we're going to say, we're going to hit you with an increase. And we can argue whether it's a large increase, a small increase. It's still something that I don't think we should be doing to the, to the people of Columbia or the commercial people as well. So I think we should go back to being responsible and doing it in July.
Can I get in here?
Susan, anything you want to say or?
You're, you're muted, Susan. Susan, you're muted.
I'm sorry. I, I understand your, that perspective and it's, it's your decision. I just, it just seems to me that it would be helpful to the process to have a little more experience this year. But, but I understand what you're saying, Ginny, it makes sense.
I, yeah, I, as we all know, have a different opinion from Ginny's. I think if we are going to raise the, the rate, I think this is certainly an opportune time to do it. It is a minimal amount. I would like to know from Susan, Ginny said that it would be different, I have not heard that. So I would like to understand what the difference is between one penny and, and two pennies. That, what difference it would make in income to CA. And I would also like to understand, again, I believe if a one-cent raise would be an average of $20 per year. And I never spoke to anybody last year, I spoke to a lot of people who did not support last year that we raise it. So this year, when we are in such dire straits, to not raise the rate seems to me to be irresponsible. I think we need to do everything we can to try to make CA as healthy as possible fiscally. That has got to be our, one of our first, we have several goals, but one of our primary goals. So I, I agree with Susan in that we need to wait until September. I also want to say that I disagree with what Andy said last night when he said, well, we'd have to get the community on board. I think the community already well understands what our fiscal situation is. I've been asked a number of times if CA is going to go under. So the people, a number of people are very upset about the fiscal situation. And I think one responsible way for us to help ameliorate that is to raise the fee, at, at least one cent, if not more.
Like to get in the queue, Andy?
Alan, you're next.
Okay, so, I, I'm finding myself agreeing and disagreeing with all that's been said. The, I do think the community needs to be involved, because I think, and I think Nancy, you'd be one of the first, if it was something you didn't believe in, to complain and I would be, I would be with you if the community wasn't involved. And so I think that's, that's important. I don't get the connect, Ginny, I get that you're against raising the rates, I understand that. And, you know, there's, people can have different opinions about that. I don't get what that has to do with when we start the budget process. Could you help me out with that?
Yeah, from my point of view, I think Susan could do a better job of explaining it. But from my point of view, it gives Susan an idea of what the rates will be and the revenue that will be coming in as a result of that. So therefore she can do, and her staff can develop the expenditures.
So the two are not related, whether, so.
Yeah. Well.
You just want us to make the decision earlier?
It, yeah, it'll tell her earlier how much revenue are coming in from at least the charge rate and the cap. It won't tell her how much from the membership and other things, but it at least tells her that.
I just wanted, I just wanted to understand the, I thought you were connecting the two and I was not understanding, thank you.
Okay, I have Chari, Renee and Lynn.
Can I get in?
And Janet?
Okay, thank you. I appreciate, Susan, you're, you're shifting around the schedule because I think this is a situation, as we keep saying, unlike anything we've ever faced. And the more concrete information we have about how the gyms are doing, about how classes are going, about how much revenue is coming in and about how much revenue has showed up through the annual charge is going to help us think strategically as we are looking at what the budget needs to be in order to look at what's essential. And I think, you know, if there's anything that came out of that, that exercise that we did last time, it's that there was a good understanding about primary stakeholders and secondary stakeholders. So everything that we do here is going to be influenced by that and the actual amount of money that we have coming in. I think it's going to be much easier for the board to come to consensus if we have evidence. And that evidence is not going to be there until the end of, of August. So I support Susan's approach in, in shifting the calendar. I do have a couple of questions about the dates here, if I may ask. And on the draft here, it said a budget request, including those from CA board members, are due to staff by September 10th. I, I wasn't exactly sure, I mean, I, I understand that that's something that's been emphasized. Susan, could you clarify what that is, is specifically talking about?
Yes, so, so we would, next week, on next Wednesday, we would send out letters to the various stakeholders through the board to village, the village managers and to the advisory committees and advisory committee chairs and, and ask you to begin to develop the ideas that you have for what you want to see in the budget. We are going to make it clear that this year, you know, we do that every year. And, but this year the, the resources are going to be less, but we still need to hear from the community and you, the important, you know, you guys, what you expect to see. So that's what we would, that's what we'd be asking for. If we could get that by the 10th of September, then that would give us a jumpstart on evaluating some of those things, even if we don't have the parameters placed much later.
Susan, if I may, just as a point of clarification, it's not so much what everyone wants to see, it's as an opportunity to make a request for the budget, for the budget process.
Right. That's correct.
Chari, did you have any other questions?
There are other people waiting in line, let them, go ahead.
Renee?
I support what Chari said and whoever else, I'm on, I'm on line with Susan.
Lynn?
Okay, I, I also support that. We need to make, we're going to be making hard decisions, we all know that. The more information we have, and especially if we can evaluate it over at least a period of a couple of months rather than having to deal with it all at once, I think it'll make it clearer to us. We need current information on costs, on revenues. We need, and we also need to make decisions on what we think are the essential CA services. What, what is, what makes CA CA, and we need to decide that now. Is it open spaces, is it facilities, is it programs, you know? We have a lot to discuss.
Janet?
Yeah, I'll just, I'll echo those sentiments as well. While I am not supportive of raising rates, I do feel like the more information that we have, particularly regarding what our annual charge income looks like, the more informed decisions we can make.
I'd like to get back in again.
Nancy, you're next.
I just want to explain that I am not against including the community. I just think that the community has its own version because it hasn't seen anything from CA about what is happening with CA. And so I think this is an opportune time for us to begin that process. I agree, Alan, you're right. I wouldn't want to see a change without being informed first of what the plan is. But I would certainly expect that CA should begin that process now so that the community is prepared, if in September, we can get enough people to support raising the rates.
Okay, so.
We can't wait.
Any other discussion? If not, this will be on for a vote at the July meeting, right?
Yes.
Yep, all right, so, you know, we, we have to make the decision then. All right, next up is the most recent development tracker. Kristen, Jessica? Milton, anything you want to say or?
Let's keep moving.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I did not attempt to do a PowerPoint for you tonight, figured we could just have an update and then if you guys have any questions based on the development tracker that was sent around, move on to that. Quickly, I want to let you know that the planning board met on the Hammond High School project, I think, last week. They, we submitted a testimony before them encouraging that the building sign for the addition to the Hammond High School could incorporate courtyard or usable amenities that would reflect the open space that we see in the Newtown area so that the open space that's actually provided on that lot meets the intent. And that they also support the, trying to include a sidewalk on the north side of Guilford Road. The planning board agreed with our sentiments and we believe that they will include encouragement for the public school system to follow those sentiments in their decision and order. Upcoming in the next few weeks are two zoning board cases, Erickson and the Hickory Ridge Village Center will continue to meet. And then the county council, I wanted to let you guys know, I think there's been a few emails on this, one sent to everyone, but wanted to confirm that we did submit written testimony on council resolution 892019, which is related to the Dorsey Overlook Project. That council resolution is essentially, would sell a portion of closed roadway fronting between the main Maryland 108 and the project development site to that developer, one corporation. We submitted testimony saying that, that if that property is. Um, we submitted testimony saying that, that if that property is sold to that developer, it should include public amenities that continue forward public goals in beautifying the area, um, which relates to your concerns that you've had prior, um, related to that development, and to improving pedestrian and bicycle transportation opportunities in that area. Um, the, that resolution, council resolution, is currently on the table for the county council, so at any meeting, they can vote to pull it up and vote on it, so we wanted to make sure that we actually got written testimony for them. Um, and then just letting you know that next week, the planning board will be meeting on the Snowdon River case, which is the Starbucks drive-through, uh, near the Supreme Sports Club. Those are my updates for what we're actively tracking. Were there any questions about the development tracker this month?
Jessica, I just have one question. On the Hickory Ridge, how many meetings have they had so far, the zoning board?
I think they've clocked over 10 at this point.
Is, is there any sense that they're coming to the end of the meetings?
Not, not particularly. Currently, what they're in is opposition testimony, um, and then there's a lot of, uh, back and forth cross-examination, because it is actually kind of a quasi-judicial process. Um, so there's a, a lot more opportunity for testimony, and then a lot of their meetings are getting bogged down sort of in procedural discussions. Um, so I, I'm, I'm anticipating that that is going to continue through the fall.
Okay, thank you. Any questions now?
Yeah.
Jenny?
Uh, Jessica, on the Hammondville, Hammond High School, uh, there's a fence around Hammond High School right now, so I'm not sure if they're doing construction already. Do you know if all the money's been approved for the addition?
I have not checked that. I can look into the school board budget and see what's going on with that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just curious, because I was surprised, I thought they had to wait, but, uh, they've got the fence up right now for the last week or so. Thank you.
Any other questions on the development tracker? If not, thank you, Jessica.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, we're going along to capital projects and open space updates. Milton, anything you want to add?
No, let's, as Dennis.
So I do, I do have a short PowerPoint, which I'm going to load right now. So first up on is the, we talked about last week, the, uh, pathway at Borbel Row. Part of that project is also stream stabilization, and, um, so that is, um, our team members that are doing the work, we had to rent some equipment, and that is the implicated stone that we've talked about, where it's kind of, um, like build-it, Lego-style, to create the stabilized stream. Uh, we did phase one, the phase one of Hobbit's Glen Clay Courts is completed, took that system down to the liner, rebuilt the first two of the, of these six courts, and the courts have now reopened. One hundred and sixty of the one hundred and seventy-plus pot lots are open, and, you know, we're continuing to do some work, and, and if we can get more open, we will. The basketball courts have reopened. The Lake Elkhorn Pavilion remains closed. Um, the weed harvest, I don't know if anyone has seen it out on the lakes, but the high use areas such as Lake Kitten Town Center, Lake Elkhorn, Wild Lake, around Jackson Pond, so we are maintaining those at pre-COVID levels, and some of the back country areas are not getting the same maintenance they would have gotten in previous years, or a, the grass cutting schedule was pushed by a day or two or three, um, but in the high-use areas, we are able to maintain those at the same level. What's interesting is actually the maintenance has, has actually had to go up. Last year, we started twice a day trash pickups at Town Center, um, in light of the additional trash, just general use of, of Town Center, and, um, this year, we've had to go three times a day or weekends because of the number of people that are out, that are at Lake Horn. Dennis, Dennis, before we move on, um, is that, is, is that a recent picture, or is that a file picture? That's a file picture. Okay, thank you. Because they don't look like they're distancing or wearing masks, those. Yeah, that, that's a file. And I've got a short video that shows the, uh, the, the installation of the Fairway Hills Bridge and how that was put together. Did they let you drive any of the equipment? You know, what's interesting, they had on the, um, we actually, to do the, uh, the sediment deposition area on Murray Hill, CA rented, and we, uh, used two of the largest off-road dump trucks I've ever seen, and they asked me if I wanted to drive them, and I said, "Absolutely not." I was smart enough to keep myself off the equipment. There you go.
Thank you.
Not quite. And, um, if there were any questions?
So, so Dennis?
Renee, and then Shari, Renee?
So, so that move, or video clip, how long did it take him to put that bridge up? That we saw in 30 seconds?
Um, it took, I don't know exactly how many weeks, I think it was over the course of like three and a half weeks.
Wow, okay, thanks.
Shari, and then Jenny?
Uh, yeah, I just had a quick question about the lakes. Um, as I've been, um, going around, um, they're getting very, very heavy use, and I've seen, um, a lot of extra, uh, garbage, a lot of plastic in particular, that seems to be winding up. I don't know if it's washing into the lakes, um, I, I hesitate to think that anybody's throwing anything in, but, um, uh, is there anything that we can do to, um, I, I, maybe move up our schedule in terms of getting that stuff out of the lakes? Um, I know you have a schedule for doing this, and it may be very hard right now, but what does that look like for getting that plastic out? Because it really looks bad, particularly Lake Elkhorn, when you first start from the parking lot and start going around. It looks junky. Um, any way we can utilize, um, uh, resources in the community, like we always do a cleanup every year, um, in, in the villages? Um, is there something that our residents can do, maybe, to help out during this time?
So we, um, we do have, there are resident cleanup days, um, but those are single individual days and not ongoing, um, maintenance of the lakes. Um, I'll, I'll drive down there and take a look at it tomorrow, and meet with my guys and see if we can't re-prioritize that, because our goal is that the high-usage areas would be maintained at the same level. Um, that does mean this year, um, with more people out at the lakes walking around, that we've had to step up the traffic up, but I'll drive down there personally tomorrow and take a look at it.
All right, thanks so much. That's great, thank you.
Jenny?
Yeah, Dennis, my question's about mowing. Um, there are areas where the county contracts with CA to do mowing, um, and part of it is, we do additional mowing, more than the county would be doing, say in our median strips is one example, uh, but it's at CA's cost. We're not breaking even, and, uh, we're really subsidizing the county. Uh, are we continuing to do that, or are we cut back so that it, where it's a break-even?
We cut back so it's a break-even this year.
Okay, are we getting any complaints about that?
Uh, no one's mentioned it, no.
I mean, I don't care, I don't care if we do, I don't think we should be subsidizing the county. Okay, thank you.
Janet?
Yeah, Dennis, I'm curious how that bridge is anchored.
How is it anchored?
Yeah.
There are, um, abutments on both sides, and it's, um, anchored into those abutments on both sides, concrete, like little foundation walls.
Thank you.
Alan?
Yeah, a couple things. Uh, first, I just wanted to thank you, Dennis, too. I've been, this spring, because of the new dog, walking the paths and walking around Hobbit's Glen more often, and I've sometimes spotted things and sent you emails, and I don't know if they've been helpful, because sometimes I figure, I, I, I figure, or it feels like you've already been informed of them, uh, but ho- hope it's been at least a little helpful, and you've always been very responsive. I've also been very pleased with the, the new bridges. I don't know how new they are, but there's certainly a number of new bridges down in the Hobbit's Glen area, in, through the path system, relatively new, that, um, make the experience very pleasant. I do have a question. Around Proudfoot Pond and emanating out from it, there are a, quite a number of orange-redish plastic pa, you know, uh, ribbons that are tied around big trees, little trees, that say either wetland or water or something, that they're clearly marking some demarcation of a, of a wetland. Are they ours, first question? Second question, are they still needed? Third question, if they're not, at some point, and I, I don't, I'm not saying take the time, advocate taking the time now, but it'd be nice if they could be gone. I mean, they're, even make it a Boy Scout project, or a Scout project to get rid of them there, they sort of take away from the natural beauty.
Um, I, I'll take, again, I'll, I'll take a look at that tomorrow, I'll drive down myself. They're probably no longer needed, um, they're probably surveyed, so, but I'll take a look tomorrow morning.
Great, thank you.
Um, go down there.
Any other questions for Dennis? Dennis, thank you very much for the work on the path around Lake Elkhorn.
Absolutely.
Thanks, Dennis.
Okay.
All right, next up, status report on the operating budget. Milton, anything you want to say?
I, there's not a whole lot to report on. Susan will have more knowledge on day-to-day, but basically, we're, we're, we're annual charges, everyone, Susan?
Yeah, I am.
The annual charge, uh, uh, statements have gone out, and, and the conversation with Susan today, and also some of the staff that was in the office today, were getting an exceptional response, and so, um, that's one of the things that we're, we're monitoring very closely, as Andy stated last evening.
Susan, anything you want to add?
Yeah, so I, I'd hope to have an update to publish to you today, but we had, we're having just staffing, um, constraints and some technical challenges, but we're tracking, um, cash flow well, uh, we're, our, our spending is below what, um, we had targeted. Uh, the annual charge revenue is difficult to compare, but the collections are going well. I think we received, uh, as of Tuesday, the seventh, uh, 1.2 million dollars by then. The feedback from the community, um, has been, um, really decent, like, um, the team has, um, I think, talked to or emailed, um, about a thousand, you know, in response to about a thousand inquiries so far, and, um, only had two that were really critical, and the rest, um, you know, benign and, and business-like, um, a couple, um, positives, so, um, that, that process is going well. Um, expect the major mass payers to pay, um, by July, um, by the 20th, I think, and we'll just, we'll keep you posted on that.
All right, any questions? Uh, Shari?
And then Alan?
And Alan.
Um, yeah, can you tell us anything, or, or Dan, can tell us anything more specific about, um, how things are going, um, at the gyms and at the tennis courts and at the golf courses? Um, those were the, the three things that, um, that were opened up, and, um, uh, golf courses, of course, outside, uh, gyms constrained by, um, by, by indoor regulations. Um, so, so how is that going?
Actually, it's been going very well. Um, the golf courses have been beyond busy. Um, I think the hot weather, we finally, um, I think Joan said last weekend was the last, the first Saturday that the T-sheet wasn't booked until sundown, um, but it was also approaching 100 degrees, so, um, that's understandable. Uh, all the other facilities have been tracking at about 30% of, um, normal usage, um, except for the swim center, which is tracking at about 92% of last year, uh, so, um, it is being heavily used. Uh, the members that come in, um, have been very appreciative of all the efforts that the staff puts forth, um, to, to make things safe. Um, we have the senior hours at the athletic club, and Leslie was actually joking today, as opposed to having people waiting at the door when we open it by the AM, she now had a group of people, there's 10 people waiting, socially distanced, of course, outside the front doors, waiting to get in at 1:30 for, uh, the senior hours. Um, so, so programming and, um, uh, usage is going, is on track, and is on par with what has been seen nationwide. Um, we would expect to see things start picking up over the course of the rest of this month, um, and being consistent with every place else. Um, but overall, it's been, uh, a really good experience, both for the members and the staff is really happy to be back at work, um, and engaging with the members again.
Anything else, Shari?
Yeah, how much staff is back? If you're about 30%, did, did you budget in effect for staff for half of what you usually do?
Yeah, it's, the staffing is reduced. Um, uh, you know, there's only one person typically on the front desk. Um, the managers and the rest of the staff are walking around clean facility, but as Susan noted, um, you know, we're tracking with our expenditures. We, we anticipated opening with slightly less than 50% usage, so we budgeted accordingly. Um, so, uh, staffing is, is scaled to match the needs of, of the facilities.
Uh, Alan, and then Lynn?
Couple of things budget-related. I, I have still not heard a, a, a reasoning for charging people $10 a month to freeze their membership. I, I get that we do it for snowbirds and that sort of thing, and so it's something in place, but this is quite a different, uh, situation, and I'm not clear if it's possible for people to, to let their membership go and just get it back in a few months. It's not like we're going to be raising rates. I'm not sure if people have been really informed of what's, what's going on, so I'd like to hear more about that. So it was very clear in the letter that was sent to the members, um, they could freeze their membership, or they could cancel according with the membership agreement, and if they came back, when they came back, they would come back at whatever the prevails came back, when they came back, they would come back at whatever the prevailing rate was at that time. And that was clearly stipulated in the letter that was sent to the members.
I hear you. I just think it's a nickel and diming that we didn't need to do. I'll let it go. The bigger issue for me, and it's not sports and fitness related, is at the last board get-together, I forget whether it was a meeting or a work session or a special, whatever, we specifically asked management if the, all the buildings were going to be brought up to the same standards as possible. Obviously, not every building can get the same HVAC system that's in the new athletic club, for example, or whatever, so there are constraints. And since they, and we made it clear that since we considered them, those of us who spoke about it, all CA buildings, it should be a CA responsibility to make that happen. All of a sudden, our village managers get a letter saying, hey, if you want this fan pay up. That's not acceptable. Please explain, or what am I missing?
So I'll attempt to explain. So I think the, what, I think Dennis did a good job actually making that clear. So all of the facilities will be brought up to the county codes, and that's what we are doing. So the ones, then, anything above and beyond that, we were saying, it's just like for CA with Haven and headquarters, we would be paying for that ourselves. So we've had, I think, I should let Dennis, I see you're back on there, Dennis. You want to talk about what Jeremy's done?
So Jeremy has gone around to each of the facilities to take a look at filters that are in place, whether or not they can be upgraded, to make sure that the fresh air supply is open to the greatest extent possible, and to make sure the units are operating as they are intended. The UV fans are above and beyond and not integrated into the HVAC system. In fact, I was, I haven't seen them anywhere except at CA facilities. The county doesn't have them, Lifetime Fitness doesn't have them. These are above and beyond what's, and really, it's something that CA has done extra, and we're thinking it's the same way at facilities. So CA is managing the HVAC C-systems at the neighborhood centers, but these UV fans are not part of the HVAC C-systems, and they're, if you want to take the next step, or a next step, this is one possible next step that the village managers could take. And again, as I said last night, they don't fit everywhere. They mostly fit in just the larger rooms. I'm not sure they would apply at Owen Brown, because we have low ceilings at Owen Brown. They might not apply at the Hallhorne Center. They would apply at the big room in Taylor Hall, at the, they probably would apply in Stonehouse, the big room there. There's probably five places in the community buildings where they apply. They don't apply, I don't think, in any of the neighborhood centers.
Okay, I get that. Part of me, part of me does want to, part of me does want to find out how you know the Lifetime Fitness doesn't have these things. Are you hanging out at their places?
I have a friend who goes there, and because I'm interested myself in what they have and how many people they have using the facility, so.
You've got moles. This is good.
I don't personally belong there.
I understand. I, I hear you, and I heard you last night, and I guess maybe, it falls for me under another opportunity to, for better communication, both with the villages and with the board, because staff was asked this question specifically, and I don't recall, or maybe somebody wants to point me to the tape and say, this is where you were told and you just forgot. I was, we were specifically asking about, are there things that we're going to be charging the villages for? And, nope, 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 that was the answer. And then all of a sudden, they get a, oh, change in policy from Jeremy, whom I respect very highly, but I don't recall the board changing our policy, and we certainly made our wishes clear. And I understand there are differences between board policies and policies that management creates, but it just, it leaves a bad taste in my mouth.
Andy, if I may, would you need to clarify that we're not charging the villagers, the village association for anything? Basically, as Dennis stated, that we're doing the inspections, and we're making sure that those facilities are in compliance with Howard County Health Department requirements and also the code. Anything above and beyond that, if that's a request, that's one of the villages wants for a facility, that's a decision that the village is making. We're not charging them for that, and we're not telling them they have to install that, anything above and beyond.
I understand that, and we could have been told that when we asked the question. Instead, we were told, nope, 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 and then villages were told, change of policy, which was never run by the board.
Lynn? Oh. Lynn?
Okay, some good news. I went to the golf advisory committee this week, and I've never been to such a happy meeting. Everybody seemed to be content. They were busy. The courses were as busy as they have ever, as they had been in probably a couple of years, according to the players. It was good to see that, and they were very, very appreciative of all the hard work that CA had done on that. And the same thing, I'm going to the senior gym hours at the athletic club. They're seamless. Not a whole lot of people there, but very, very comfortable being in, so I think you're doing a good job. Thank you.
Janet?
So Milton, what you said is not 100% accurate, because in Longreach, they came in and installed one of the infrared cameras, or whatever, filters, and then after the fact said, oh, by the way, now you can pay for this. So they had not requested that CA come in. And Alan, to your point, I thought I remember, and again, like, I will acknowledge that this could be faulty memory, but what I thought I remembered hearing was that things like the infrared things that would be in few places, CA would take care of. If it was up to upgrading filters or that kind of thing, then that would be an expense that the village would take on itself, which is, would be very manageable. So I agree, I think there was not clear communication on that, and I, you know, specifically know that in Longreach's case, we did not request it. You know, you came in, and then we were told we had to pay for it.
Well, Janet, I will tell you, and if we, if CA installs something that was above and beyond what was meeting the health, the Howard County health standards and also the code, and then we put something in that was above and beyond that and said, oops, you have to pay for it, that's our fault. We should not have done that.
And that's my fault.
Wait, wait, Dennis, Dennis?
That's my fault. That got installed. There was some miscommunication on my end.
And what we can do, Dennis, then, if that's, we're going to eat that cost. If we did it above and beyond, and the village did not ask for it, then we'll eat that cost.
Okay. Nancy, and then Shari?
Yeah, I'm, I believe I'm the one who asked Dennis when he showed us those lovely infrared fans, that I asked if they would be installed in the village buildings, and he said yes. He said that once more staff comes on board, they would go around and they would check out the facilities, and if that was a good place to put it, they would put it there. That's what I was told, and I think it was like a month ago, when he first showed that slide with that fan in it. Maybe it was a little more than a month ago. I can't remember anything anymore. So I know that Wild Lake did expect to have one installed. They were happy to hear it, because they've been taking lots of online courses and learning about what they need to do to reopen safely, and those fans would be, I would think, with the COVID damage, or COVID concerns, that these should be installed. And the building is owned by CA. Why would the villages, who do not own it, put that kind of money into what will become a permanent asset? I wouldn't put that into a rental or someplace that I don't own if I were to turn around and leave, especially right now with the money crunch. Wild Lake is not one of those villages that has a lot of money in surplus. I know you think all the villages are rolling in money, but they're not. There are two that have good surpluses, and the others do not.
All right.
I think it's unfortunate. This is causing some further hard feelings with the villages because of the misunderstanding. Three weeks ago, they were told that CA was going to install these, and then they turned around just very recently and told, no, they won't.
Shari?
Yeah, I have to agree with what Janet and Nancy and Alan has said. There was definitely an understanding that CA would follow through with their buildings in the same way that they were doing their buildings at the gym for tennis or any of the other facilities. And if this is a health issue, and that's clearly what it is, this is not an upgrade for cosmetics, this is a health issue during a pandemic, when we know that it's the air quality that is probably the most important thing that's involved in the contagion. So for these facilities to be able to open and open safely, why would it be any different at the gym for our programs or our members there than for our programs and members and any of the village center-based facilities? I don't, I don't get the logic of that. The other part of this that concerns me is that when you say the health codes at the county level, they certainly have not caught up to this. They're trying to manage a pandemic and doing that kind of planning. Eventually, the health codes may catch up to it, but I think the information we're getting from the CDC, from Johns Hopkins Health, from all over the place, is guiding our efforts. So to tell the village associations that you're going to have two different tiers of levels, some buildings are going to get, but some buildings aren't, that's a very dangerous precedent. Yep.
Any other, anyone else? All right. Anything else, then, on the?
Yeah.
Renee?
Yeah, so Susan, you handed these out to us or sent them to us, I believe, for the June meeting when we approved the budget and closed meeting, and then I got this as my assessment, this brochure, and the numbers don't match. By a lot. The overall numbers match, but I think you allocated stuff somewhere along the line to sports and fitness and other divisions that weren't on our approved budget. So I'm trying to understand exactly what CA is doing. So is there any way you can take what you gave us? I know the only real change I think we made was with the village, split up whatever you guys had suggested that we cut between that and something, but like, sports and fitness is off by about $10 million. I think you allocated expenses somewhere. So could you resend these with the allocations? No?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yes, what we're doing is we're in the process of producing a budget book for '21, for FY21. So rather than send those, we're going to get that budget book out within, I've got that, no. That's as soon as we get the audit done and the Q4 book done, but that's in the works, Renee.
So we're going to get this in a book?
Yeah.
Okay. And then I have a question about the memo you sent out today. Here it is. You said that you billed on 6/19 or thereabout for the memberships. Did you, is that the amount that you received?
Yeah.
So you have like, I'm sorry.
Finish it, go ahead and finish your question.
No, no, so I was just going to say, like, it says you receive, it says, membership billing a million five, but is that what you received or what you billed?
That was June 2019, and that was.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
For the 954,000.
Right. So what billing means is that it's drafting someone's bank account for their credit card, so it is what is received.
Okay.
Now, then that is, that was net of the bounces and the declines at the time. That number, I'm sure, went down some in the past week because we held open the week, people to, we held open longer a period for people to cancel or freeze, so I'm sure that went down, but that's the draft of the credit cards and the bank account.
Okay. Could we possibly, you know, early next week, get an idea of what was actually received net of all those changes in membership? So it would go from 954 to something else?
Yeah, I can't get that done by early next week, but we'll do it as soon as possible.
Thank you so much. Okay, and then, so I guess my next question is, I personally feel like, if I, I can do away with all the rest of the budget, but I want to track sports and fitness, because depending upon which set of numbers we use, we're going to have anywhere from a $10 million to a $13 million loss, and we're going to be funding a lot of that through our assessment money. And so is it possible that the two big numbers there are receipts and then salaries and wages? So when you report out to the board, and I think what you did was really great, I'd like to get it monthly, I'd also like to get an idea monthly of the salaries and wages and how they're tracking. So it looks like on this, you're spending about a million dollars a month in salaries. Is that what you're thinking in your head, or is that figure, I mean, is that going to be evenly divided over the 12 months, or is it going to be broken out some other way?
Are you asking if it's budgeted evenly?
It's budgeted, it's budgeted $12.6 million, so about a million dollars a month. So my question is, is it going to be evenly divided over the 12 months, or are you going to ramp that figure up somehow?
Are you, are you asking if the budget is going to be evenly spread over those months, or is the?
Right. I'm, yes, is that budget figure going to be spread over the 12 months? In other words, am I looking at greater losses in the first couple of months than, I'll say, September, October, November?
Yes.
Okay. So can you give me an idea of what you're estimating the loss to be right now?
No. That's what I really had hoped to do, but I could not get that done in time, so we'll get that also as soon as we can.
Okay, so will that budget information be given to us by quarters, monthly, or what?
So.
Only this budget. I'm not worried about the rest of them. The rest of them are minuscule in relationship to the $10 to $13 million loss.
Well, I would say open space at 16 is not minuscule.
Well, I have other questions about that, but.
Yeah. So we will be producing a budget book that is on an annual basis, like we have done historically, so that's in the works. That's the budget.
Okay.
Now, you're asking about actual results, that we will definitely be doing that quarterly, and I hope to do that more frequently, but it's a change in a process coming at a bad time, so that's, but we are definitely on track for at least quarterly for actual to budget and actual to last year.
Okay. All right. And then I just have another question. The fee income, is that personal training income?
So it's personal training, green fees, cart rentals.
Okay.
Class registration, all of those things.
Okay. All right, well, that makes sense. Okay, I could get what's in that number. All right. All right, and then can we go to open space for a second? So my understanding of open space was that the people were taking a 75% pay cut? Is that what's going on there?
No, that's the opposite. They were paying. They were taking a 25%.
I mean, a 25% pay cut?
For the most part, yes.
Okay, and then now are they full-time, part-time? Are they still taking a 25% pay cut? Or are they working, how, how are they being paid?
It's still a mix depending on the function and the, and the person. Some people are still on a 50% furlough. Some people are still on the 25%. There's, the senior team is still on a 50%, senior team plus a few.
Oh, okay.
Then there are a couple, there are a few people who either were taking a flight risk or the 25% pay cut took them below minimum wage or below the minimum wage if they were. And then so they're at either the low, the higher of their, you know, the lower of the 75% pay or the minimum wage or living wage. So it's an array of pay.
Okay.
Scales over, you know, a lot of people.
Okay, so are we using any subcontractors?
I'd have to defer to Dennis on that.
Yes, the answer is yes. We've reduced that subcontractor account by probably 65%. But yes, we are using subcontractors.
And what are they doing?
They mow the medians under the contract that we have that can be reimbursed by the county. They mow some, some of the facilities. They do some work at the lakefronts. They do a bunch of different odds and ends.
So I guess my question is if we've cut some of our employees' wages or furloughed them 25%, why aren't we trying to increase their hours rather than use subcontractors?
So it's a little cheaper in some cases to use, use the subcontractors. So to stay within budget, it's a combination. And again, and like if you look at the Far Bell pathway work, that was originally supposed to be contracted out. But my goal was to keep our guys busy first. So that example, I used CA employees to do all work. But in order to stay within budget for the overall open space team, I had a subcontract got some work.
So I guess I'm, me, not anybody else, believe that our employees should be valued above a subcontractor. And I'd like to know what the difference in expenses are to use a subcontractor versus bumping up somebody the 10 hours to make them full-time.
Andy, if I may, basically, we're trying to manage a budget and this is operations. I would like for us to have an opportunity to manage within the budget, within the constraints we have. Yes, we've used subcontractors before and we will continue to use subcontractors because sometime that's the best fit. I, I just ask, let us manage the budget and let them make those operational decisions within the budget. The biggest thing for us, we will not go over the budget.
Okay, so I, I guess we just have a difference of opinion that I value the employees more. That's fine.
It's not a matter of valuing employees. Our employees are very valuable to us, but we just have to, we have a mixture. And that's been a practice before the pandemic and it will be a practice after the pandemic.
And we don't have the full workforce to be able to do it all with our workforce anyway. We, we were heavily relying on outsourced contracts before. And like Dennis said, a lot of the work of the other work has been brought inside. And also we've got some of the folks who are on, especially on Dennis's team, on the 75% furlough, they are, they're getting, we have them set up with this program with unemployment where they're getting the unemployment compensation, the $600 a week for now and having a day off. So we, we also are trying to manage the workload on them. They've been working non-stop early in this. And so, you know, we've also, we've continued benefits and CA has helped up the employer, employee portion of that on behalf of employees. So we, I, I really would hate to see in your blog something that said that we do not value employees.
Well, I understand.
All right, any other questions?
Yes, I'd like to get back in.
Alan, you're, you're next.
Two, two things. One, Milton, I, I, I'm the executive director of a nonprofit. I get the difference between operations and board role. And an answer, I just want to let you know, I don't need a response. I just want to let you know that an answer like you gave, let us manage the budget when board members express opinions or concerns, has the effect on me of saying, hmm. My antenna goes up and I say, hmm, sounds like something I may want to investigate because maybe the board needs to create a policy about that. I would rather have management be open to hearing the feedback and stating the case and having the discussion. What I want to come back to though is if I was tracking the earlier discussion about these fans, what I heard from staff was our policy has always been, we're going to bring this, the buildings up to, to code, health standards and anything else that the villages want, they're going to have to pay for. But Jeremy's letter said there's been a change of policy. What was that change of policy?
That really isn't a change in policy. It's always been the policy. The fans are, are plugged in, they're not permanently attached to the real estate. So they're not.
So was, so was Jeremy in error when he said there's been a change of policy?
Yes.
Okay, I will accept that.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
No, go ahead.
I would like to know what the bottom line is. What can the villages who have the facilities that could handle these things? What can they expect? That, are they going to be charged or will CA pay for them?
Right.
And Dennis, we'll follow up with that because basically there hasn't been a change in policy. We, this is what I talked to Dennis about and this is what we do. Remember we had said that CA's in two, CA's in two least facilities, the headquarters in Haven. The approach we're going to take is the same thing. At the headquarters, we ask for anything above what's required by the, the, the health code. We have to, our, our, our landlord has told us, we have to pay for that. And going into this, this is the same approach that we told that we, that we would do with our facilities. We will make sure they are compliant and make sure that the environment is safe per the code. But if there's a request for anything above that, that would be the responsibility of the village association. But we were not, it's not something we're going to be charging them.
Now, wait a minute. You just said that's not something we would be charging them.
Nancy, what I'm trying to say is that if they, if, if the villages want, if the village association wants a, wants a, a, a fan or something that's above and beyond what we determine is required to by the, the health code and, and the guidelines that we're using, that would be something that the villages will assume the cost for and, and for themselves, for that village. That village.
If they want it. If they want it, they can choose to put it in.
And what if the, what if the board were to decide that the policy should be, because this is a health issue at a critical time, that CA will pick up the cost because it is CA's building?
You can't make that carte blanche situation because every building is not the same and don't have the same requirements.
I agree, but if the building is suitable for this particular piece of equipment and will be used by a number of people so that they would get the benefit of this, then my suggestion is that it sounds like it's something that CA should provide for their own buildings.
I, that's something that the board would have to decide and we also would have to look at the expenses. Because you're asking us to go above and beyond for facilities. There is no income generated to CA. And we've been talking all along about the, the budget we're dealing with.
I agree, and the villages also have no, no income at this time either. So although CA is suffering, I just want to once again reiterate.
I, understood.
All right. All right, ready, we'll move on to the next topic. Prefile state legislation? There was none. All right, on to discussion of the Howard County General Plan update and process. Milton, anything you want to say?
No.
Kristen.
Yep. I had sent out a memo to you all in the packages indicating that the county council was reviewing the Hoco by Design general plan guidelines. This past Monday, they voted to adopt it. So it's all set to go. There was one condition placed on that approval, which was that the county would like to approve all of the Planning Advisory Council members, which includes me. I see no reason that the council would vote in any way other than favorably. So I think everything's good to go and we're just waiting for Howard County to decide to commence with meetings.
Kristen, a good question for you. Who's actually on, I mean, proposed to be on? I haven't seen that yet.
They have not disclosed that yet. I asked, I asked for it and once I am provided with it, I will share it with you, but I do not know the answer myself.
Okay, thank you, Kristen. All right, Renee and Ginny.
Kristen, could you just please send us a link to the Hoco by Design so we can pull it up and read it?
Sure.
That would be great. Thank you so much.
Yep.
Ginny?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Kristen, it may be in here someplace. But do you have any idea of when they might have their first meeting?
I last checked in with DPZ about that. I would say two or three weeks ago and they still did not have an answer. I can follow up again, but I think it's.
Yeah.
Get to whatever the next phase is and I don't know how close we are to the next phase.
Yeah, well, is the council planning on approving these in a public process with a resolution, et cetera?
When you say approving these, you mean the, the members as well?
Members, yeah. If they're planning on doing that, you're talking about they've got to advertise. It could be in August, it could be, you know.
Oh, um.
That'll delay everything because you can't meet till you're approved, right?
If you remember, they don't meet in August.
Yeah, so my, my point is more than likely, you know, are they planning on this being what normally happens? The executive proposes something and it's put in a resolution. The council has a hearing on it and then they vote, vote, which would be, you're talking about September. Is that it or we don't know yet?
That is the process, then you are correct. I don't know if there was any less formal approval option that they were going to go with. I, you bring up a good point.
Okay, well, if you, if you could find out anything, let us know.
Yep, I will.
All right, any other questions? If not, I'd also like to point out that there's a series of work sessions scheduled. Kristen, would you like to?
Sure, as you're all aware, we're going to be embarking on a new town visioning type of planning process. We have brought on some consultants. The room, the room, and by room at this point, I mean virtually, will include all of you, some senior staff members. And I have reached out to each village to tell them that they may send one representative, either the village manager or a representative from their board. And so they are all gradually getting back to me with the name and contact info for their representative. But included in your package this week was a list of the work sessions that will be happening between now and the end of the year. And prior to each one, you will get a link to the, to the work session. And if there's any supplemental material, we'll send it out then as well.
What time of day are these being planned for?
They are at 7 o'clock.
So I just want to point out to the board, please remember, there are seven workshops. Put them on your calendar. They're seven to nine. Just reserve that time. Five of them are Thursdays because we're used to meeting on Thursdays. But two of them have to be Tuesdays just.
Can you give us the dates?
Andy?
Nancy first and then Ginny.
Well, I think I can help Nancy. Rather than talk about dates now, they're in this packet. But Janet's idea of putting all this on a calendar, this would be something that I think would be essential to put on that calendar. The group calendar for the board only.
Right, but I'm just reminding board members that these are the dates.
Yeah, yeah.
Nancy and then Shari.
No, go ahead. I'm looking for the dates. I see them.
Yeah, so I'm looking, it looks like they're divided up into four tasks. Discovery, big ideas, synthesis, and then a summary report. That summary report, it says findings, PowerPoint, written document with a draft and final version of each. Is this envisioned as a series of guidelines that will emerge? Otherwise, I think it might be, it might be a good idea to add a task number five, which is that the board is then tasked with, with looking at policies and guidelines related to any of the things that come out of those findings. Because one of the things that when you delve in this type of thing, I've, I've been on commissions and groups that have looked at the school board, that have done a lot of different land use, a lot of different things in the county. The most important thing you can come out with is a sense of, and what action are we going to take? A report by itself, but without an action piece, is much less likely to have an effect, particularly in terms of linking up with the county and influencing that process. And that was the whole reason to bring these folks in. So I, I think it's not just what are the consultants going to be doing for us, but then what are we going to do at the end of this process? Maybe a fifth step, if you can somehow work that around. It could be board and staff action planning or something of that kind that gives us some idea that there's something else that needs to be done.
I would say that if there's something along those lines that board and staff wishes to do after the conclusion of the consultant's work, we can talk about that. But bear in mind that the action is, well, there will be lots of tangential action, but the focus of the action after the fact will be when we engage with the county in their new town durets and other work related to the general plan. So we'll be leading up to that throughout the whole entire process. And when we get to the end, if you feel that there's more discussion needed with the board and my department, we can talk about that.
So, so do you see this as being just a passive information gathering for the board? Or do you?
You're going to be, it's, it's not passive. It's very engaged and the board will be expected to share ideas and their own vision for Columbia and what you want and what you want to stay the same and what you want to see changed and how that happens over time. It will be a very interactive process. And the point of the consultant, work sessions one and two might be a bit more passive as they give you some historical information about planning. But the other ones will be based on, basically you're, where you see Columbia going. It will not be them telling you things. You'll be telling them things.
Okay. All right, so maybe it was just the wording when it said summary report. Maybe I was reading in that it was going to be a report of a list of something. And I, I really think the whole point of this and the reason we're paying these guys is so that we can step into an advocacy role.
And I think the report may list, for example, I, I didn't intend to go down this path tonight, but I think the report may, for example, reiterate the goals and objectives that you have for Columbia in the next generation and how you can advocate for that. So.
All right, thank you.
Now, we, we can continue as far as we go.
Yeah, Ginny?
Yeah, just two quick things. I agree, Shari, the whole idea is to be proactive, not what we usually are with the, the county reactive. But, but the question I have, I've been wondering what the, and asking what is going to be the process? the process in terms of, will there be any other or public involved? So actually, I'm hearing for the first time that the villages have been asked to send a representative. I just want to be clear that I understand that better, and I would think the other board members would want to understand it too, so as they get questions from their board, they understand exactly what that role would be. Are they just going to be observers, participants?
No, they will be entitled to participate as much as you.
Okay, so it's one member from every village, 10 people, correct?
What, you plus either the village manager or a board representative?
Yeah, I count us as the board, so it would be one member from the board, literally from the board, not a village manager, one member from the board.
One member from the CA Board of Directors, and one person from the village.
Well, okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. What I'm trying to ask is, forget the CA Board, we know they bloody well better be there. What I'm saying is, when we talk about the villages, this is the first I heard of it tonight, and I just want us to be clear, maybe my colleagues are clear, but I'm not, exactly what that means. So is it the village, when Okwa Mills asked me, is the village can select the village manager, they can select the chair, or can they actually select anyone from the board, which is one of the village board members only?
Any of the above, any of the above. The board may select one of their own members or the village manager. If they select one of their own members, it may be the chairperson, or it may just be somebody else on the board, but they get one person.
Okay, and it cannot be, though, some zoning advocate in that village, or anything else?
No, we're trying to keep some, yeah.
Yeah, I just want to, it's an elected representative, okay, thank you.
All right, Nancy?
Wait a minute, I'd like some clarification on that.
All right, Jess, and then Nancy.
No, I'm done.
You're up for me? So, you know, Hickory Ridge has a unique situation in that we actually have a land use liaison on staff, and so that would be someone that we may want to have represent. You know, she is an actual representative of the board as designated, but she's not the village manager, and she's not on the board, so...
We'd like to keep, I think, once we open the door to people outside of the board or the village manager, we go down a rabbit hole that we don't want to go down, and I would, it would be my recommendation that it be limited to a board member or the village manager.
Could you please explain that rabbit hole? It doesn't make any sense to me. Why are we trying to dictate to the villages who makes the decisions?
Yeah, well, she, this is a paid employee of the village. So do you, so you think the only staff person who would be eligible to participate would be the village manager?
That was our intent.
Okay.
All right, I think Alan, and then Shari, and then Dick.
Well, I just, I need this rabbit hole explained to me. It doesn't, it feels like a usurpation of the villagers' right to make their own decisions. What's the purpose?
It was just that we want this to stay within the realm of the village boards, and not suddenly have members of the public who aren't necessarily representative of the board to be participating in these meetings. They're not public meetings, in the way that other board meetings may be, and that was a way to kind of focus on what representatives would be present.
I hear that. You just need to know, it wasn't convincing to me, so I won't be voting in favor of that part of the policy.
Sure.
Yeah, I, when our village manager contacted me about this, I thought this would be a great opportunity for some of our younger, newer board members to get involved in these kinds of issues, because it's really running the gamut of our history, really delving in deeply into new town and into zoning, and it's the younger people who are going to need to know these things and have this awareness moving on into the future. They're the folks who are going to be living with whatever comes out of this plan. So I think it would be a really good idea, and you might want to think about that with some of the younger cohort that's on your village board, about getting them involved in this now, so that they become the springboard and, in effect, the information leaders as this process moves forward. It's a great opportunity.
All right, Dick? And then Renee? Dick?
I had unmute there, couldn't find the button. If you ask the village to select the representative to attend this session, you'll let the village pick the person they want. If they want to pick the village manager, that's fine. If they want to pick the board chair, that's fine. If they want to pick a member of the board, that's fine. If they want to pick an employee of the board, that's fine. But you don't tell people that they can, you know, pick a representative and then tell them, no, they can't pick a representative, ask somebody like this. So let's just let the villages pick their person and be done with it.
Renee? Renee, you're muted. Renee?
I'm trying. So my question is, why does this have to be a closed meeting?
The meeting is really intended to almost train the board and give you an opportunity to speak freely and do some brainstorming, and really focus the conversation around the board's vision for Columbia in the future. I'm not sure that it would be appropriate to have some of, have other people present while the board is in a version of a training session.
Okay, I guess I just disagree.
All right, Dick?
If the board wants this to be an open meeting, it should be an open meeting. It's not a training session. We're talking about what our vision is for the community. The community has every right to listen in to what we're saying. I mean, let's, let's be open. Let's talk to people. Let's let people hear what we have to say. Maybe after hearing what we have to say, they might want to give one of us a call and say, hey, have you thought of this or that? That's how you get the community involved. And I just, you know, the secrecy thing, I just, I just don't see how it fits.
It's not intended to be secretive, and I think that it's...
But it is secretive.
It's not secretive. The board is establishing how they would like to go forward as advocates for Columbia, and getting some guidance as to how to advocate, and how Columbia got where it is now, and what other towns have done moving forward. How can we apply those principles here to achieve our goals? I think that that's not, not the same as a public meeting where you're deciding things like, you know, making decisions about the policy, or, you know, how CA is going to be run, or anything like that. Additionally, I would add that when we spoke to the consultants and mentioned that there was some desire within the CA Board to have the public instantly engaged, they indicated two things. One is that a virtual meeting with too many people is just, you know, unmanageable. But second, we can take some video clips from those meetings and post them on social media, so that the public does get to see some of the conversations that we're having. It's not that, it's not secretive, it's just not every meeting is meant to be, some meetings need to happen in-house among ourselves, so that we can get our own priorities in order.
Well, I agree with you that you don't want to have too many people participating. In fact, I think 20 people is a lot for a productive meeting, but that doesn't mean that people can't watch it. And when we have a quorum of board members in a meeting, that's a public meeting. I mean, unless you decide to vote to close it.
Andy, I'd like to get in queue, please.
I think you're next.
Thank you. I hope it comes as no shock to anybody that I absolutely agree with everything Dick has just said. I will certainly not vote in favor of a plan that includes closed, and I believe them to be secretive meetings. We have a list of things that we can, if we want, keep secret, it certainly doesn't fall under them. And no, we're not talking about how CA is run, we're talking about Columbia's run, and how, what we think about it. This is the ideal thing, to have the public able to see how the sausage is made, and see what we're thinking, and have their elected representatives held accountable, to be transparent and open and honest, and say what we have to say. As far as the numbers, Dick, it's going to be more than 20, because it's 20 board, 10 board plus 10 villages plus staff plus consultants. And I agree with you about the participation, but I mean, I've been part of virtual things where we had 1,500 people, and we just make sure that some people's cameras are on, and some people's cameras are off, and some people are muted, and some people aren't muted, and it's very easy to do. It's not an issue, and if the consultants are having trouble with it, we may need to find different consultants. I'm done.
All right, anything else? Anybody else, anything else? All right, thank you, Kristen.
Thank you.
All right, move on to chairs' remarks. I just want to point out, you know, in part of my chair remarks, I listed a number of our webpages where you can find information, and I would certainly encourage you to share that with, you know, the folks you correspond with. A lot of the websites there give you good information, and sometimes people seem to have a hard time finding it, so I thought I'd put them out there. Last night's meeting with the villages. So Nancy?
Okay, well, where to begin? Andy, I know you worked hard on your presentation. You gave out a lot of good information about the finances, but there was a lot of anger when people left there, and I think that it's something that we really seriously need to talk about. I think, you know, we went through the strategic plan and made one of our top concerns improving relations with the villages, and I hate to say it, but I think from everyone that I've heard from about it, it really upset people, and I think it did more damage than it did good. I don't know if anybody has heard anything positive about it, but if so, please jump in, I think we need to hear that.
Nancy, I've heard positive remarks. The people I talked to were very happy.
Okay.
And by the way, I did tell Jonathan to gather feedback, but I also told him to see what the next topic should be. But now Janet and Dick.
I was just saying, I didn't hear negative comments, but I'm sure I don't hear from as many people as you do, Nancy, but, you know, from Longreach, it was, you know, neutral bordering on positive, and I think it was viewed as a first step, which is my understanding that it is. So, you know, while, if it were a one-off meeting, I don't know that I would call that a success, but I think it laid the groundwork for future meetings, and I hope that we, as a board, will come up with a regular cadence of such meetings, so that we can continue, well, so that we can start communicating better with the villages.
Dick?
I thought Andy's piece of it went very well. I thought he really got into the nitty-gritty on the budget. It was clear, it was understandable. I actually learned something from it, when it came to some pieces of that. So I think that was a very, very effective piece of it, and I have not heard anything negative about it, as, and my village manager also spoke well, she had been watching it, and thought it was useful information.
Shari?
Yeah, I think there were good intentions all around, but there were, as far as a critique of the meeting is concerned, and again, critiquing is different from criticism, so I do want to give credit to the folks who worked very hard to organize this. I think Nina certainly tried to put it together, blend in two different ways of doing things. But, you know, we're all, we're all learning. This is a learning curve for everyone. As someone who could not, because of the health issues, be there in person, the virtual part was very difficult. I could not hear the questions that were being asked. Very few of them were repeated, so there was a lot of stuff mumbling going on, and nobody who was participating virtually, you really need two mics. So please, if we have to go through something like this again, if we are going to have information given, and then we're going to ask for feedback from the audience, everybody has to hear what the feedback is, because there's no communication if you don't have feedback. I think it could have been more, more of a dialogue, less pushing information out, and more listening to what the village, village folks had to say. And I think we, because it's our habit to fall into this PowerPoint presentation, I don't think that's what the villages really wanted from this meeting. I think they wanted something that was much more a being there in a circle, engaging. And I did not, you know, again, virtually, I did not get the sense that there was much of that kind of engagement. And I think the issue of communication, which came up last, got very short shrift, and I think there should have been more questions asked. Where do you feel that there is a lack of communication? What do you think could be done to improve communication? Rather than saying, we don't have any ideas. That puts such a, such a negative spin on it. And so I think people left in a deflated kind of way, after a very difficult, I won't even say conversation, about the management contract. That was a very, very difficult piece, and there was no recovery there, there was no recognition of emotion, there was no processing. So the people who were upset left being upset, and I think that's the kind of thing that CA's got to do better at. We don't want people walking out the door being upset. If we have to bring in a professional facilitator, like we did with the neighborhood centers, that is money well invested if we're going to do more of these types of meetings. So, you know, again, I do not want to say that, that this wasn't a good attempt, but we have to debrief this, so that the next time around, we don't fall into some of these old patterns. Thank you.
Dick, you had your hand up?
Could I get in the queue, please, at some point?
Yep.
Okay, I just want to say yes. I spoke about Andy's piece of it, I thought Andy's piece went well. The business about the management contract was... The business about the management contract was just a disaster. The thing that my village manager told me when we had a chat afterwards about this, is she said what the villages are tired of is being talked down to. That was the main thing, of not being taken seriously, is not being part of a full partnership. They just, you know, the gods on Olympus are throwing down lightning bolts, and they just have to duck them. There is not a sense of participation there. But I also, yeah, Nina did a great job putting that together, and I think the setup, you know, done as quickly as it was, was pretty impressive. And certainly, we could do some things better. Two microphones makes sense, repeating the questions. There are some things, but, you know, for the first time we've ever done anything like that, I think it went well. And, you know, you know how I feel about the chrysalis, but I thought this was a great venue for that sort of thing. It actually turned out pretty well, especially under the current situation.
Alan?
Yeah, I agree with most everything that's been said, so I'm going to try not to repeat too much. But I do want to emphasize it needed more dialogue. And, well, I thought you did a nice job of what you did, Andy. It was too much Andy's show. It was, I think, a missed opportunity to have our president not say anything, except that I don't want to say anything. I'm not clear that there was any real benefit from having it. No, I wasn't there, so I can't, I may have felt different if I was there, but I'm not clear what the benefit was from having people live there. It's a, something we're dealing with in our work in terms of as people go half back to work and half not. Do we do training sessions with half people on virtual and half people in a training room? It feels like it's a recipe for inefficiency. And I would say it doesn't surprise me that people are hearing different things. It's sort of what various people have said, so it reminds me of when I went through divorce and how all of my friends kept saying, "You're right, you're right, you're right. This is awful." And my then-wife's friends kept saying to her, "You're right, you're right, you're right." We tend to get these things reflected back to us. And so there were some things to like, and there were plenty of things that were problematic, and we need to address those.
Okay. Anything else?
Can I just? Yes.
Renee?
Yeah. So I spent a little bit of time after the meeting talking to some of the village chairs, and I think overall, they were glad that the staff and the board was willing to sit down with them and have a discussion. I mean, were there things we could have done better? Yes. But there's always room for improvement. The one thing that they all expressed an interest in was having a quarterly, like joint work session and putting that on the calendar sooner rather than later, where they could at least bring the village chairs together with the CA board. And the one thing that I said, and when I said it, they kind of agreed with it, was to chair the leadership of meetings. So one time Andy could do it, the next time one of the other village chairs could take the chair position so that we got a real flavor for what their leadership is about and their strengths and weaknesses, as well as them understanding us. So I'm just going to throw that out there. But I think overall, there's always room for improvement, but I think that the good thing out of it was that they want to do more of it.
Jenny?
Yeah. One, I do want to congratulate Nina. It was actually a brilliant idea. I had reservations about it, quite frankly, but somebody asked what was the benefit, and I think one of the benefits was we got a chance to talk to people prior to the meeting starting. So people from different villages, the village managers, the village chairs, I think that was a real plus. So we did get that social interaction going that we would not have gotten from this type of approach. The correction thing, clearly, we need to do something about the audio component of this. It just, it wasn't working. People have trouble hearing. That's totally inexcusable. And that, you know, we understand that, and the next time it won't happen, we'll correct for that, whatever we have to do. The agenda, the only other suggestion I'd have, it was a full agenda, but the next time, we might want to add one of the chairs representing the chairs be on the agenda to present their perspective at this point of what their concerns are. The last thing is I would not have quarterly meetings. That's too frequent. I know we think it's a great idea, but really, when you start looking at our schedule and their schedules, I would definitely schedule twice a year on a regular, you know, regular basis, twice a year, and get that on the calendar to meet with them and the agenda to be decided. But we do need to finish up on any loose ends with this management contract because that was the only part of that agenda that looked really confusing in terms of communication. I thought the rest went very well, quite frankly. And I was pleased with the mix. I thought it was a great idea, and everybody felt comfortable from a health point of view and a safety point of view. Thanks.
Anything else? All right. If not, we're going to move on to president's remarks.
No, I don't have any additional remarks.
Any questions for Milton? Nope. All right. Propose new topics. So we got three things. One, Shari presented something, so I'm going to let Shari go first. Shari?
Okay, thank you. I hope you all got this. The create a communications working group. This is something that we have been talking about for a while. So the suggestion I used Janet's form in a somewhat abbreviated form. But the idea is to have a CA board communications working group composed of three members to address communications issues in a time-sensitive manner, to coordinate it with CA communications staff, and to make recommendations to CA board on critical communications with members and Columbia stakeholders. The benefit during the current COVID crisis to help develop more rapid, accurate, and helpful communication strategies and timely informational messages delivered in multiple modes to CA members and stakeholders. So this is in response to a number of different episodes that we've been through the last couple of months. The associated strategic priority is strategic goal number one. Right, number one. Objective five, improve communications from CA to community and partners. And why now? What's the justification? Because CA has furloughed regular headquarters staff due to COVID-19 health and financial issues, and the communications department recently lost two key long-term team members. The communications function has struggled to respond quickly and effectively to community members' questions and concerns. The pandemic has brought about rapidly changing conditions affecting CA facilities, services, and programs. A coordinated, rapid-response team effort will help CA stay in touch with villages, businesses, and Columbia residents. And the time sensitivity, I thought, was urgent because events, both internal and external to CA, are changing rapidly. CA needs to develop a clear communications plan for the next six to 12 months.
Okay. So?
That's my proposal.
Shari is proposing this. So is there any objection that we put this on the next agenda for the meeting for a discussion and vote?
No, it's an excellent idea.
Because that was our process, I'm going to ask you. And if the majority of the board, I'm hearing no negative feedback, so it'll go on.
Thanks, Shari.
Thank you. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Shari.
All right. Next thing is, taking two things, streaming of work sessions. Okay. I am not opposed to streaming work sessions. If the board wants to stream work sessions and we have the capability. It's just that, right now, I know, it's, it was like two years ago, but we did take a vote not to stream work sessions, only stream meetings. And so what I would like to do is hear kind of how you feel about it, and we can certainly change that. That's not a problem.
Andy?
Yes?
Is there any, I mean, I'm for it as well, but is there any technical problem that we should hear about? I don't, I can't imagine there is, but with IT staff or...
Not with the streaming, because we stream meetings.
No, 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 I mean staff being available or whatever we need. There is a staff person.
Yes, you're right. I mean, we will definitely have to have staff there. Staff has to do the streaming.
Could we just check that out and make sure they're not furloughed or something like that?
No, if the board decides they want to stream the work session, we can schedule that, as Andy said.
Okay, great. That's all I, I just wanted to double-check that. Great.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay. Dick?
Yeah, I think this ought to go on the agenda. We did make a decision two years ago, but it was a very, very different situation. And now that we're not in a room together where the public can attend, we have to make an exception. Now, this could be a temporary exception, but I think we need to discuss that at the next meeting.
All right. So is there any objection if we put this on for the next meeting?
Nope.
Okay, because I want an official vote. That's what I really want.
Official vote at the next meeting?
Yeah, July.
Or at this meeting?
No, no, next week. I'm going to put it on the agenda for the July.
This is a work session.
Yes, good.
Andy Shari has her hand up.
Shari? Shari?
Yeah. I would also like to bring up the issue of resident speak-out. I did see on our website that there is a quickly moving-by little box that says that if you want to find out more about this. And by the time I read it, it had already passed. But at least there's something up there, which is good. The limitation of what we have right now, I think, is sort of an artificial barrier at a time when so many people are home and could be participating easily from their laptops. This is a situation that has, that again, maybe this is an upside. But like Alan, I have also, in the nature of my work, been using Zoom. I think Janet has been. A lot of us have been doing this now with our villages. And Zoom will accommodate much greater numbers of people. I think we need to consider breaking off resident speak-out from the rest of a meeting. And if the concern is that we have to capture everything, I would much rather hear what people have to say. So, and make it so that everybody on the board is hearing the same thing at the same time, the way we have in the past, than to be concerned about recording it. Now, by the way, you can record in Zoom. There is a way of doing that. You can also control how many people participate. It's a question of learning that system, but it's not that difficult to do. And I think CA has to move into this new era. I think we're looking at a year, at least, when there are lots of people who are not going to be able to attend in-person meetings. So let's make that shift in our thinking. Why not have a segment that could be, the first half hour is resident speak-out, and anybody can come and talk about anything. And then that part shuts down, and then we move to a second part, a regular agenda meeting. You can take a five-minute break in between. Everybody gets up and stretches and then goes to the other portion of the meeting. There are creative ways, maybe there's a better way of doing it, but that's kind of a bare bones way of handling something like this. If there's some reason why this can't be done, I would like to hear it. I would like to hear why it can't be done.
Right. So what is going to suggest?
I'd like to get in the queue, please.
Sure. As we've talked, is let's bring Chuck, our IT director, into this conversation. Because I'm, I got to admit, I don't know all the details. I'm, you know, I prefer that Chuck be part of this conversation.
And Andy, if I may, yes, Chuck needs to be a part of this conversation, but if I may quickly respond to what Shari just stated, we could do that as long as we know who the resident speak-out, who the people are going to be. What I've been told repeatedly, we cannot put that, our number, the meeting contact information on our website so that anyone from all over the world can call into our meeting. We can, if there is, we can have, as you said, Shari, you want to have 30 minutes for the first part of your meeting. People, residents send us and say, "We want to call in." We can provide those residents with that information as long as it's not available to the world. But let Chuck explain it to you, because we've done a lot of things to protect our system. And that's what we have to, that's what I, that's what we have to keep, make sure we do. We don't compromise our system trying to overlay something just because someone else is doing it someplace else.
Have we had a security issue that we need to be aware of?
Wait, no, not in an open meeting. We're not going to talk about that in an open meeting.
Well...
Yeah, let's...
Could I get in the queue, please?
Down that route.
We need to close meeting.
Yeah. All right.
Then are you saying we need a closed meeting to discuss this?
No, we don't need a closed meeting for Chuck to come in and talk about what we can do and what our system has done, the protections we put in place. As I said, Shari, the biggest issue for us is not having resident, we can have resident speak-out, it's just that we need to know who's getting those numbers. We don't want some bad actor in China that's searching and coming up with our number and all of a sudden they're taking, they're taking control of our meeting.
All right. I just have to say, I've never experienced anything like that, and I think many of us are dealing with these kinds of meetings. But yes, I do understand the point that you're making.
Okay. Alan, Janet, and Dick?
A bunch of things. First of all, I'll try not to repeat most of what Shari just said, just to say that I agree 100%. Until Shari got to the breaking off of resident speak-out, I don't see any difference between, I mean, obviously, resident speak-out is an opportunity for residents to speak, but an open meeting doesn't require people just to speak. It requires people to be able to observe. And so I don't see any reason or benefit to having a separate resident speak-out session. Not only do we know Zoom, but I think most people, in fact, Zoom is becoming like Kleenex. I had a Zoom meeting. People may or may not, you know, that's what people are using. It's the industry standard. People know it. And I'll just say, I absolutely reject the notion that, the security notion. I'm open, obviously, always to having my mind changed with new facts, but we don't know who walks in the door of our headquarters. We could have nefarious people coming in, listening in to our board meetings. If that's what they want to do online, that's fine. Zoom does not allow anybody to take over our systems or take over our meetings. Not only do I use it with clients, I use it with all kinds of government clients. I was just on six hours today with National Institutes of Health using Zoom. I could name many other large, security-conscious institutions of government and others that use Zoom all the time, and we've... that, that use Zoom all the time, and we, it's not an issue. Zoom, the platform, yes, had some issues way early on, back in March, they made some changes. Uh, there's no issue for me of putting it, the information out publicly, so people know where to find us, and they can come. We have protocols where, if you're here, the only time you speak is on your allotted time in resident speak out, it's just like when they're face-to-face. No reason not to. Thank you.
Janet? And then Dick?
So, I, I agree that we, oh, actually, I'd like the idea of breaking out the resident speak out, cause it seems like that would clear up anything. But honestly, we can use Hangouts, they have a 250-person limit. I, like, if we had 250 people, we wouldn't even be able to have them all speak anyway, so I don't really see that, you know, limitation. I agree that it's an artificial barrier. Um, and quite honestly, I'm not sure a half an hour is enough, but maybe it is. Um, but, I mean, I don't, I think if, as long as we agree to stream the rest of the meeting, then there's no reason that people have to remain on the call. It can be a separate call, if there's any sort of security concern, it's irrelevant, they can watch the stream. So, I, I agree that we should have some sort of, um, ability for resident speak out, and it can be in Hangouts, which is what we're currently using, just as easily as it can be in Zoom.
Dick?
I, I'm confused as to where the interface is with the, uh, CA security system. Uh, I, the only thing I can think of is that we have people of, who are calling in from their offices. If everybody were to call in from home, uh, there'd be nothing but air between our system of CA system and, and, uh, and the internet. So, uh, I, I, I just fail to understand what this security issue is.
Okay. So, we'll invite Chuck, so we can have the conversation. And by the way, Shari, I like your idea, and thank you for proposing a, a solution that, you know, kind of like out-of-the-box thinking. Thank you. All right. Um, I think the last thing...
Could I request, maybe it's, maybe it's assumed, but I want to make sure, whatever data Chuck wants to present to us, I want to make a strong insistence that it be presented to us in advance, so we can digest it and, uh, investigate, rather than just hear a bunch of facts that are being asserted, that we have no way of, uh, interacting with, really.
Milton? Yes. Did you hear that?
Yes, I did.
Okay. All right. Um, then the last thing I, I have as part of the present topic, uh, Ginny? Do you have something?
Yeah, just very briefly, um, a couple of us were talking about, um, the last meeting we had when we were looking at, um, selection process, uh, for the next president/CEO. And one of the things, two things we came up with, one, uh, Janet volunteered to assist, should we get the similar type situation where Andy is trying to chair a meeting, it's really not fair to any chair to expect them also to have a document that they have to edit at the same time. It just doesn't make sense, it's not workable. So, um, if, if it's agreeable to you guys, I don't think this has to be a topic, but if it's agreeable to you guys, we can start this at the next meeting where, uh, Andy and Janet get together, talk about the next agenda, and see if there are specific topics like that, that they, uh, would like Janet to take over the role of actually keeping track of what's being said, et cetera. So, it's, it's an administrative thing, if that's agreeable to everybody, to make things function smoother. That's point one. Does anybody, is that okay, or is that all right with everybody? Janet has volunteered with some...
Which Janet are we talking about?
Oh, our Ja, Janet Evans. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
It's, it's good with me, because I, I find it extremely difficult to, to try to put the documents up and then keep track of everybody else, because my screen goes blank, I'm looking at something.
Yeah.
So, helping that, I think, is really good, and...
Janet has graciously volunteered to do it, and, uh, we all know she'll do an excellent job, so...
I, I believe I've been voluntold, but that's okay.
Great idea.
I told you the pay would be excellent.
Make, make, make it so.
Excellent. Is that okay with everybody? Cause then we can...
Yeah. It looks like.
Okay, it's up to you guys then, Janet and Andy. Uh, the, the second thing was, um, we were talking about this, and it worked well, it, there was no problem tonight, but sometimes there's a problem where everybody wants to talk at once, and everybody's waving and raising their hands. So, Jess has a possible solution for that, where we, we would use chat, and just, the topic would be, um, X, uh, make up anything, um, sports clubs. And, uh, there's actually a document, and we all want to talk about it. So, Jess would, Jess would train those of us that don't know how to use chat to simply write our name there, and she would, at some point, read off the order of who's going to speak, and keep track of when you're waving, or, we can find a way, you can just check your box, so that they know you want to speak next. But the point is, she would control that. So, Andy, again, is trying to control the meeting, keep things flowing, and Jess would just say, okay, Lynn, Shari, Dick, Nancy, um, and then you would speak, and then she'd go to the next ones that are on the chat list, saying they want to speak, Alan, Janet, you know, does this make any sense? Jess would actually make a proposal to us, if this is agreeable, that she can just continue to work on this, and send it to you and see what you think. And you could make comments.
I don't feel like it even needs to be a proposal, just do it. I mean, there's nothing that requires Andy to be the one to do it. Andy could delegate that to whomever, that portion of chairship to whomever he wants.
But, the, the thing I like...
I, I do want to, I'm, I'm wondering about the, the role of our vice chair, though, I just, you know, seems to be starting some responsibilities.
She's volunteering us what to do.
She's the delegator.
She's delegating.
Yeah, I'm finding the jobs for these people, so I collect the finder's fee.
All right. Jess, do you want to say anything? Jess, do you want to say anything?
Yeah, so I don't know, I mean, really what I would like to get a sense of is, are people familiar with the chat function on Google Meet?
No.
And do you feel like you need to understand how to use it?
Yes, yes.
Okay. So, what I'd like, yes, you need to know how to use it?
Yes, yes.
Yes, all of the above, okay.
I'd like instructions.
So, what, yeah, so what I would like to do is, between now and our next meeting, just sort of come up with, like, some real basic written instructions, so then everyone can either on their own time, or individually, individually with me, or, you know, 15 minutes before the next board meeting, kind of walk through it and try it. Um, and just get comfortable with what it looks like and how it functions, so then when you, we do use it in a meeting, you're not going, well, how do I do that? Um, so, so, you know, what, and I'm, I'll just send an email and say, hey, if you want a little chat tutorial, you know, either we can do it on our own, just on a Google call, or we could do it as a group, whatever works for everybody. I'm flexible.
Now, objective here as well is, when Jess calls, uh, again, Lynn, Nancy, Dick, Janet, and somebody else tries cutting in there, uh, that's where Andy would, Andy would stop that. He'd say, wait a minute, you heard the order. Ginny, you cannot speak at this, okay? I'll use me as an example.
Yeah, that's still up on the chair's responsibility.
Yeah, no, so the point is, though, that, you know, Jess doesn't take that responsibility and try and be the bad cop. Andy is still the bad cop on that, okay? But it has to be done, because we do have people that cut in when other people are speaking, and they, they didn't even ask to be on the list. Uh, and that just messes, and other people get mad then, so, okay.
Well, the other thing, too, is, is, even though I'm, I'm watching the screen, occasionally I miss people raising their hand.
Right.
Um, you know, I'm, I might be writing something down or something, so, um, I'd, I like the idea of, like, having a list, and, and then, cause then it's not on trying to figure out, did I miss Nancy, or, you know, did Dick raise his hand, or, whatever. All right. All right. Um, I want to...
So, just while you, before we close up, just, I noticed that Alan helpfully put up there in the chat, where to find the chat. So, if you look at the top right of your screen, if you just mouse over that, it'll say chat with everyone in that little text box. Just, that's all it is. And then you type it in there, everyone sees it, and then you could say, me next, me next, me next, hey, you know, and we can go from there. So, but I'm happy to spend time with anyone who wants to get really comfortable with it.
Yes, you're gonna have to spend time with me.
I'm happy to do it.
So, so I'm confused. If you're, I'm, I'm fine with you telling people who's next or whatever, but then who's running the meeting?
I will still run the meeting.
Andy.
So, yeah, so why is, okay, I'm just confused, that's all right. I'm, I'm gonna be quiet.
Think of it as more, it's a secretarial function of, so it doesn't distract Andy look, either looking for people's hands, or waving, or he doesn't have to read the chat, Jess is volunteering to be the one to read the chat and announce the order.
Yeah.
Okay. And it also means that, uh, there'd be more likely people will not be overlooked, cause Jess will be just concentrating on your waving, or, and if we can find another way where you don't have to be doing the waving, and there's, sometimes in some of these things, you could just put a, a thumb up, you know?
Ginny, that's where the chat comes in, if people put their name in the chat, then there's a list of who's next. No one has to wave at all.
That's a good point, good point, yeah.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
You can just say, I'd like in, I'd like in, and then I, they're all in order, in the order that they came in.
Okay.
Now, of course, if Jess is every other speaker, then we might have a problem. Cross that bridge when we come to it.
I, I am not.
All right. I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight, um, and we'll see you next Thursday. Remember, we have a special session focused on our advisory committees. So, um, hearing, no...
Andy? Andy, one last thing, please.
Shari's waving.
Shari.
I'm not, I'm not in the new system yet.
Shari and Ginny. Yes, Shari?
We were going to send something out to the, um, to the heads of all the advisory committees, that we're asking them to present next week, that was gonna be a, a shift in how they were presenting. Not just what did we do last year, but we were trying to hook them into, um, given COVID-19 health and financial issues for CA, what do you want to see next year? Or how does that impact your group? Or how do you see CA going forward, um, over the next year and the next five years? So, if that has not gone out to the advisory committees, I don't know if it has, but if the liaisons with those committees can get in touch with those, um, chairs of the advisory committees, so that when we come to that meeting, I think it will be much more productive. Does that make sense to everyone? You can send them those five questions that we went over, um, just something to jog their thinking, because I think there's, there are probably some very good ideas within the community, and that's what we really want to solicit this year.
Shari?
It would be more efficient to have one point of contact, send it to them.
Yeah.
I think Milton has something.
No. Andy, that's different than what I thought that we were sending to the, to the staff, to the advisory committees. I thought they were basically being asked to come with their, well, basically first, the board would get the information, uh, the one, the single sheet from the advisory committees in advance, and then the, the advisory committee representatives, whether it's the chair or someone else, would come prepared to respond to questions from the board, based on that information provided on that sheet. And that sheet, basically, Shari, was their, um, how they performed compared to the board-approved initiatives from 2020, and what their ideas are for initiatives for 2021.
I guess I'm not, I'm not familiar with what that sheet is. Has anybody else seen that?
No.
Well, I, I don't know what you're, what you're talking about, Milton, I'm sorry.
No, it was a board-approved, remember, the board-approved...
...format last year that they followed.
Yeah, single sheet that would go out to, you said, make sure it's no more than one sheet, that would go out to the advisory committee, and they would fill it out based on the, how they performed, how their, their accomplishments from FY '20, which was last fiscal year, and what, based on our strategic plans, what initiative they were, they were presenting to the board, with the board consideration for FY '21.
Mm-hmm. So, so has anybody received any of these things back?
Well, it's, it's coming to you. Today is Thursday, I think the plan is to get it out to you in a packet tomorrow for your meeting next Thursday evening, the responses from the, from the, I think, 10 or 11 of the advisory committees.
Are they gonna make a presentation?
What do you, would you say, Nancy?
Is that the idea, they're going to make a presentation of this?
No. My understanding, we were told that you didn't wa, did not want the advisory committees because of, you didn't want them to make a presentation, you wanted them to provide this, this single sheet to you in advance, and then you would ask questions related to that sheet.
Right. So, there, there's going to be a rep from each committee to meet with the board next week, so that the board can ask questions.
And the whole idea was that because there are 11 advisory committees, you were concerned about the time.
Right. Cause remember, last year, we took all the time, where they were doing presentations, and we said, no, look, give us the information in advance, and then come be prepared for our questions. So, I'm pretty sure we have a rep from every one.
And then there's a certain order, we already know what that is, which ones go first, we got that, the agenda for that meeting.
Yeah, there's, there's, um...
Yeah.
They're, they're all, it's all being arranged.
Right, right.
Whatever. And I don't have a list yet of who is actually going to represent each committee.
No, we don't have the name of, of, of the representatives yet.
All right.
Okay, on a separate, are we, okay, on this issue?
Yeah, all right, Ginny.
Okay, on a separate issue, real quick, uh, the Symphony Woods, Symphony of Lights, whatever we want to call it, the legal action. Um, as I said last night, I feel strongly that the villages really need to be supportive of CA. I'm just wondering how many of us are gonna go to our village board, and what do we give to our village board? Now, there was a concern about frequently asked questions, and some need to clarify that. I think some board members had some good suggestions for that today. Is that being changed, and are we getting a second document, so that we can hand it out to our board? I know our board's meeting next Tuesday, I really want to get them to vote for, uh, supporting us in what we're doing, and tell the public they're supporting us. I think they have an obligation, they keep saying they're advocates, well, let's see it, let's see them, you know, do it. Um, I mean, it can't just be the CA board, this is too important an issue, uh, protecting the land there. So, I feel strongly about this, I don't know if the rest of you can get your boards, or you don't even think it's a, a good idea?
Yeah.
Um, Dick and Lynn? Dick?
Uh, I sent a note to my board, uh, back when this thing hit, explaining why we were doing what we were doing. Uh, I did that on account of the, uh, the blog, it really blasted us, and, uh, got a very good reception. My board, uh, my village board was, uh, was with us, and there was, there was no objection to what we were doing, once I explained it.
But my, my point, my point, Dick, is that's not enough. Um, they have to, in my opinion, this won't be pushing my board to do, write a letter to Calvin Ball, the county executive, write a letter to the council members, and write a letter to the delegation, making it clear that they agree with what we're doing, that's what they have to do. It just, you know, we're, we're taking heat from all those people, they have to see that, wait a minute, the village boards are also upset about this and supporting what we're doing. That makes a big difference when they get to the politician. That makes a big difference when they get to the politicians.
Lynn?
Yeah, that's, that's an interesting thought. What I worry about is that where is this line between privilege and what we can say? And that's where I really would love, you know, my board is very up on this because, of course, I give them reports, you know, monthly because I, you know, chair the trust too. And everybody I've talked to involved in the villages so far has been very supportive, you know, they don't totally understand it, they get the main idea, they certainly, they support CA and I haven't had one person talk about the Symphony of Lights as being a tragedy. But, you know, again, it would be good to have a strategy. I really hadn't thought about having the village write to the electeds. And again, as you know, we get a lot of pressure from the electeds around this issue, so, you know, perhaps that is a good strategy, I'd really like to think about, you know, I'd really like to have, say, an overall kind of strategy that we could do that would reach the people we need to reach. I think it's going to be quieter now, we had that, you know, the flyer came out with a big article today. And, you know, the talk seems to die down very quickly.
Andy, if I may get in the queue?
Yeah. You're next, Milton.
Everyone, I, I, I can't, I'm not in a position to tell the board what to do, but I plead with you, remember, we, we as an organization made the decision to file a lawsuit. We have now take this, taken this matter out of the public realm. We have put it in the realm of the district court for Howard County and that's where it should stay. We should have known that when we took the next logical step of following the law, there were going to be, there were going to be people in the community who didn't disagree with us for various reasons. But we decided we wanted to take this step because all the efforts we had tried in the past had not worked and we wanted to protect our land. So, right now, we have to accept that everyone's not going to agree with us, but we need to let the legal process go, pursue its course because we don't want to find someone using something said in a public forum against us in the court. End of my statement.
Could I get in the queue, please, Andy?
Alan, you're next.
Yeah, I think we need to be sensitive to all that and the courts are a public forum as well, so we haven't taken it out of the public, we've just put it in a particular public forum and I think we all know that courts are not immune to public sentiment. And I just want everybody to know that, just in interest of disclosure, once we had an FAQ that came out, we had a board meeting, our board, a couple of days ago, and I didn't read the whole thing to them, but they asked about it, or actually, I brought it up and said, it's part of my report and they were curious as to why, wanted to hear about why, and I told them I supported it and on the basis of that and a couple of, the reasoning that was in the FAQ, they seemed to go along. Whether or not it's a good idea to create some public campaign is an interesting question, but we might want to think about it in terms of a whole, not just from each individual village, but an effort that maybe multiple villages could sign on to and then go to the electeds. I'm done.
Dick?
Well, there are two pieces to this and the one is the legal piece and that will proceed. I don't see any point in communicating anything to elected officials because they don't have anything to do with this. But we, the second piece of this is, right now, we have a lot of negative feelings about CA, people are still pissed off about the pools, et cetera, et cetera, and this is just one more thing that the public is upset about, so we do need a public to relate to, and that should come from our communications department. And I haven't read the article in the flyer yet, I'll take a look at it, and, but that really is a staff responsibility to get out in front of this thing, just in terms of public opinion about CA, not necessarily about this particular lawsuit.
All right, anything else? Thank you very much. Have a great evening. Hearing no objection, we're adjourned.
Good night, everybody.